Significant agenda this evening, and I know everyone in the midst of the holidays is ready to get back to their other, their other events. So with that, we will call this to order and begin in our traditional way of having an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Father Wiley, our police chaplain, if you'd come forward and lead us in invocation.
Let us pray. Gracious, loving, and almighty God, we give you thanks for the abundant blessings of this life. We thank you for gathering us together here this evening. Father, we thank you also for the opportunity to gather as a community last week to usher in this holiday season. We thank you also for the leaders of this community and all its citizens. Father, we ask that you bless this meeting, bless this time together. Give our leaders wisdom to make decisions that are in the best interest of all that live, work, and play in this great city. And Father, we ask that you send your Spirit upon each of us as we leave this place so that we might represent you in the world. All this we ask in the name of your Son, our Savior, Jesus Christ.
Please follow me, can I join me in the pledge?
Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, if you please conduct a roll call.
Mayor Gayler.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
Present.
Councilwoman Boyet.
Present.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Present.
Councilwoman Matthews.
Present.
Councilwoman Weeks.
Present.
Councilwoman White.
Present.
All right, all present and accounted for. It is good to see everybody. For our agenda, our clerk just made motion or made mention that there was the desire to remove from new business, item nine dot four, simply put that on our next agenda, but to remove it from this agenda. If there's no objection to doing so, we can discuss that between now and next meeting and have it back under new business at our next meeting. All right. So with the Mr. Manager, are there any other changes from staff?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor, are there any other requested?
Need to add the resolution.
Oh, yes. And then we would also like to add, and I thought that had already been done, we'd like to add an item, a resolution honoring the life of a dedicated Goldsboro citizen that we will reach, we'll get to in just a little bit, Aiden George.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
The addition with the resolution.
All right. So the addition, the addition and the subtraction, correct?
Yes.
All right. And Councilwoman White, you second?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I heard, I heard a voice. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I heard, I heard a, I heard a voice, I was looking that direction. Who seconded? You did, okay. Sorry, Councilwoman Boyet, if you're second on the record. We have a motion to approve the agenda with the stated modifications of removing boards and commissions' yearly appointments and adding a resolution for Ms. George. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please vote accordingly if possible. All opposed, same sign, of course, but voting, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, seeing none, motion passes unanimously. All right, perfect. I think I may have been the holdup on that one, I forgot to hit save. All right, so with that, let me take a quick note. All right. Counsel, I believe that I may have just misstated this. The addition for the recognition should be under section four, recognitions and presentations, so it should be item four dot three, not under new business. So goofed on that one. Any objections to moving that?
No.
All right, perfect. So with that, let's move to item four dot one, which is a resolution in memory of County Commissioner Wayne Acock. And this being a resolution does require a vote of counsel. And so I will read the resolution, and then if there's no objection, we'll entertain a motion and a second, and then actually vote on this resolution, after which time it will actually be enforced. Resolution in memory of Wayne Acock, Wayne County Commissioner George Wayne Acock. Whereas George Wayne Acock was born in Wayne County and was a resident of Wayne County until his death on November 18, 2025, he is survived by his wife Linda Acock, three children, Meredith Peters, Trey Acock, and Will Acock, and four grandchildren. And whereas Mr. Acock was the county commissioner at large since 2012 and served the citizens of Wayne County with dignity, fairness, and respect. And whereas Mr. Acock served as a member of the Nahuna Fire Department, Mr. Acock is a past president of the Wayne County Firemen's Association. He is also a member of the Wayne County Planning Board, where he served as chairman for three years and served on the Wayne County, Wayne Community College Board of Trustees and the Northwestern Wayne Sanitary District. And whereas Mr. Acock was a lifelong resident of the Nahuna community and owned and operated Nahuna Storage, he operated Wayne Acock Trucking from 1971 through 1992 and worked for Dean Foods in Fason and Wilco Transportation Services in Mount Olive. And whereas Mr. Acock was a longtime member of Pike's Crossroads Pentecostal Holiness Church and also loved attending the first church in Goldsboro, he was a servant leader and will be missed not only by his family and friends, but by the citizens of Wayne County and the city of Goldsboro. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that we express to the family of Mr. Wayne Acock, our heartfelt belief that the memory of his good works and character will be and remain an inspiration to many and a blessing to all. This resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after December 1st, 2025. Counsel, do we have a motion to adopt the resolution as read?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and properly seconded. Is there any debate? Hearing none, please vote electronically if possible. All in favor, please, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, seeing none, motion passes unanimously. All right. Next, we will move to, I'll tell you what, if y'all will allow me, because I have to find something in my book, I would like to go ahead and move to item four dot two, our planning commission annual report. All right, Mr. Rose, if you would. Good to see you again.
Good to see you guys again. See, I actually had a pretty good ear thing. And let's see if I can work that. The planning board, Board of Adjustments comprised of five citizens that live within the city limits and two members appointed by Wayne County that reside in the city's ETJ. Meetings are held the last Monday of each month at 6:00 PM in the large conference room. The planning commission reviews petitions for zoning changes, street closures, renaming, and similar items as required. As the Board of Adjustment, the commission hears and decides cases regarding variances to the zoning code and appeals. Now, for the past year, I'm not going to go through every one of these, because I think your time is valuable, because each one of these have been on your desk already and been approved or turned down. And they've all been approved, if I'm not mistaken. So what I'm going to get to, if you have any questions about these deals that we've made and done with these developments, you know, please ask a question now. But I don't think you do, because you've already seen it. All right. Why I got the job. Move it along. This is what's important. The U D O, let me grab my book here. First of all, I had to be educated, and I'm sure some of you need to be educated too, because if you don't ask questions, you don't learn. The U D O is the Unified Development Ordinance. And right now, we're doing our comprehensive land use, and I'm sure you guys are familiar with that. I think it's got to be done like once every 10 years or something like that. But our Unified Development Ordinance is 15 to 20 years old. Once we get our comprehensive land use back from the folks that we've hired to put that together, it's, it needs to go with our U D O to be able to flow into it, which it's not going to be able to do. I would, some money's going to have to be spent, I believe, on the U D O for all of it to go together, or the comprehensive land use plan, it's like throwing money away. So I would start thinking about that. All of a sudden, I would think about streamlining our zoning. Right now, you know, you've got like I N O, commercial, you've got residential 16, 6, 9, all these different plans. I would streamline it, because all of y'all already have zoning for when it's conditional. Why not break it down to industrial, commercial, and residential? Instead of these people who were coming in, who have plans for development or something of that nature, they have to come to us, they got to get a variance first. A lot of time, a lot of money wasted on that. Then they got to come in and get it approved after they get the variance changed, their plans. If, I believe if you were just to streamline it to those three, and then as the council and the planning board, we can make the decision on how, if their shopping center would work in this. If we have it zoned for that, then we have to go through other of these hoops that, well, 10 years down the road, or five years down the road, that might not be working out for that area. But if we leave it open, we can go into it anytime and have it the way we want it. It's all conditional anyway. So I would look at that. That is a big part of what we've got going on right now. Is there anything you guys want to say? Anything you want, better say it now. I would, let's see, it's got up here. Do you guys have any questions for me on this U D O and the comprehensive land? If it, like I said, if it, and before this guy gives you your report back, or this company gives you the report back on the comprehensive land use, if they're going to have everything kind of zoned out to where it's R16, or the more complicated way, say, we want it out to be I, C, or R, just three. That's all we want, is three. Because if it's zoned shopping center, if somebody wanted to put in an office complex, they can't do it. Then they got to get a variance, and all that, it wraps these guys up. I need them to be making, getting people happy, these engineers, and getting plans out and getting bulldozers on ground and start making money for the city. That's all I got to say about that.
One, one last time.
Sure.
For, for the record, planning commission meetings are when?
They're the last Monday of the month.
And they're open to the public?
And they're open to the public. Want folks to know kind of the process, you know, the public hearing happens here in front of council.
Right.
But any of the detailed analysis, you know, generally happens in the planning commission as the Board of Adjustment first.
Right.
And, you know, anyone that's interested in how that goes is obviously open to go and attend a commission hearing as well. And we encourage folks to do so. But the feedback, it's interesting feedback, I think it's worth, it's worth us having a conversation about how, how prescriptive, you know, we want and need to be. I think the U D O and the comprehensive land use plan definitely need, they need to fit together. And so, yeah, that's the conversation.
I don't want to be wasting money.
Sure.
I want it to make money for you guys, so y'all can give it to your constituents.
Fair enough.
In the long run.
Counsel, any other comments or questions on this item? All right.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you for your time.
How many years have you been on planning commission now?
I think three.
Three of them?
Three years.
Thank you for doing it.
No problem. I am sure.
It's an important role. It's one of the only commissions that's statutorily mandated to. That's why this one, you have to, you have to really put in some time and some education understanding what you're doing, because there's, there's legal implications for this one. So thank you for putting yourself out there.
No problem.
For sure.
You guys got any questions? Got my number.
Thank you. All right, counsel, now we will move, now we will move to item four dot three, which is a resolution in memory of Elder Aiden Lewis George. And Ms. Gutz, is it okay if I walk this on as item four dot three, since we've stated for the record?
Yes, sir.
All right. Whereas Elder Aiden Lewis George departed this life on November 29, 2025, leaving behind a legacy of faith, leadership, and service. Whereas Elder Lewis George was a devoted mother of five, grandmother of nine, and great-grandmother of seven, and her passing is deeply mourned by her family, friends, and all who were touched by her generous spirit, kindness, and unwavering commitment to others. And whereas Elder Lewis George was a faithful and active member of New Stony Hill Holy Church, where she served as a licensed and ordained minister, offering spiritual guidance and compassion to her congregation and community. And whereas Elder Lewis George was a pillar of the Goldsboro community for decades, founding the Holy Ghost Drawing Center Community Crisis Center in 1982, where she served as president and CEO, providing critical support and resources to countless families and individuals in need. And whereas Elder Lewis George's enduring impact on the community through the, through the Community Crisis Center continues to uplift and strengthen the lives of residents, ensuring that her work and example will be felt for generations. And whereas the city of Goldsboro honors her life of service, her dedication to improving the well-being of others, and her invaluable contributions to the city's history and fabric. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina do hereby extend our deepest consolences to the family of Elder Aiden Lewis George, and express gratitude for her extraordinary life, her compassionate service, and the profound and lasting legacy she lives within our community. This resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after this, the first day of December, 2025. Counsel, is there a motion to adopt as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion having been made, been, motion, motion having been made and seconded, is there any debate? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. All in favor, please vote electronically if possible. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, seeing none, motion passes unanimously.
Are you here on Ms. Ms.?
Lovely.
I didn't know protocols.
That is, that's all right.
That is perfectly fine. I wasn't sure if a member of the family and I knew that I would be saying.
If you would like to, you're welcome.
Okay. We thank y'all for considering Aiden Lewis George and the Community Crisis Center. We thank for all that you have done through the years and, and continue to do. We still will be doing what she had commissioned and called us to do. We're going to feed the fee, clothes, whatever we can do to also work with the city and work with the council as much as possible, because there's many needs in Wayne County and around the area. We're still going to be there to meet those needs as much as possible with your help. And we thank you so much. Back to board, we haven't been meaning to talk, running back over there, but thank you again.
Thank you.
This has been a tough year for legacy servants in the city of Goldsboro. But as always, that is a call to the next generation of, of those who are interested in stepping up and leading their community. And there's a lot of them interested in doing so. So I think the future is, is as bright as it has ever been, if not brighter. So with that, let's begin section five, our public hearings. We'll begin with item five dot one. Mr. Livingston, if there's any brief from you, if not, turn it over to a member of planning, whoever you see fit.
I think we're ready to hand it over to planning. We have a number of public hearings.
Good evening, counsel. Mayor. I hope everybody's had a good Thanksgiving. Try to keep this coat buttoned tonight, but I think I've eaten a little too much turkeys. It was feeling a little tight.
Don't worry, you're just on camera.
Maybe they have the narrow lens on and not the wide lens tonight. If you will, let's start with our first annexation request. This will be one of three. This one tonight's going to start, we're going to start with Eagles Reach noncontiguous annexation. If you recall, city council did approve this conditional rezoning request for a 174 residential townhome development and three commercial lots located on the southwest side of US 70 West, north side of Westbrook Avenue, and on both sides of Isaac Smith Road. It's approximately 43.24 acres. The owner is Land, Goldsboro Land Group LLC and applicant. Again, the conditional zoning was for R6 and general business. Here's the property we are referring to here, here, located at the Rosewood Walmart intersection at 581 and 70 West. Because it is part of a at 581 and 70 West. Because it is part of a satellite annexation, there are certain criteria that it must meet. It meets all these criteria. Number one, that it meets the general statute 16858.1 for non-contiguous properties to be annexed, that the nearest point on the proposed satellite corporate limits is not more than three miles from the primary corporate limits of the annexing city, that no point on the proposed satellite corporate limits is closer to the primary corporate limits of another city than to the primary limits of the annexing city, and that the area situated that the annexing city will not be able to provide the same services within the proposed satellite corporate limits that it provides within its primary corporate limits. Here, E, the area within the proposed satellite corporate limits when added to the area within all other satellite corporate limits does not exceed 10% of the area within the primary corporate limits of the annexing city. Here's a picture of the existing farmland. Here is a depiction of the, the townhome subdivision showing the townhome development here and for future development, one day, commercial At this point in time, mayor, if you will please, city council needs to review the petition, conduct the public hearing, and make its decision to approve or disapprove the requested petition for voluntary non-contiguous annexation.
Counsel, are there any questions for Mr. Tauton at this time? All right, hearing none. Let's go ahead and move forward with the public hearing. We'll officially open the public hearing for item five dot one on our agenda. It's annexation, a non-contiguous satellite annexation petition for Eagles Reach just off of Highway 70. Anyone to come forward and speak? Second call, anyone to come forward and speak for annexation four dash 25? Third and final call, anyone wishing to come forward and speak for item five dot one on our agenda, annexation four dash 25? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Counsel, are there any remaining questions for staff on this item? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt the, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motions have been made and properly seconded to adopt the annexation petition as presented. The ordinance annexing the subject property effective this evening. Is there any debate? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. Please vote electronically if possible.
You can pop it.
If you'd just state your vote for the record, how about that?
Yes.
Yes, perfect. All right. And...
Mr. Tyler, you're good, too?
Yes, I'm good. Mine?
All right, perfect.
There it goes.
All right, all having voted in the, motion is passed seven oh, the ordinance adopting the annexation petition is approved. We just expanded our city. All right, let's step into item five dot two. Mr. Livingston or Mr. Tauton?
Hand it over to planning, mayor.
All right, perfect. Will we just keep calling him?
Yeah, that's fine.
Leave you out of it.
The second contiguous, or the second annexation, which is a contiguous annexation, is for a Mr. Joe Leonelli. Mr. Leonelli wanted to, he has purchased property off of West New Hope Road for a single-family dwelling. He needed access to water and sewer. Water and sewer was available within a thousand feet. In order to access those services, he needed to be annexed into the City of Goldsboro. So this is what we believe to be a simple annexation request. I'll go through just a brief instruction here. It's located at 1810 West New Hope Road, approximately 2.19 acres. Owner and applicant, Mr. Joe Leonelli. Current zoning is R16. The proposed use is for single-family. Please disregard commercial development. West, the applicant's requesting again annexation of one parcel totaling 2.19 Here's the property. As you see, the dash line. Currently, the house is under construction and should be ready for final inspection within a month. Air proposed meets the requirements for contiguous annexation. The petition was received by the city, signed by all owners, and the city clerk has certified sufficiency on the 14th of October 2025. Here's a picture of the existing property before the home was placed. And again, mayor, I'll turn it back to you. Requesting to review the petition, conduct a public hearing, and make a decision to approve or disapprove the request.
All right, counsel, any questions for Mr. Tauton? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing. This is now an open public hearing for item five dot two on our agenda, annexation five dash 25. Anyone to come forward and speak? Second call, anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item five dot two, annexation five hyphen 25 on New Hope Road? Third and final call, anyone wishing to come forward and speak for annexation five dash 25? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Counsel, are there any remaining questions?
I, I do just a quick one.
Yes, sir.
With, with the, with them wanting to annex and come into the city for sewer and water, I just want to make sure that with the, the amount of buildings and things they're going to put out there, that, that the water pressure will be sufficient out there as far as, or will we get to see a plan or, or some type of drilling?
Yes, sir. So, Councilman White, one of the things we do, we, we check in with members of our TRC, our Technical Review Committee, and one is through fire and one is through public utilities to make sure, number one, there's access to water and sewer, and that there are no issues with capacity, volume, or pressure. And neither one of these two agencies or departments gave us any clue that there was any issues, and they both have said that in a form of an email to our office saying that everything was good on their end. So we feel confident.
All right. That's all I have, Mr. White.
Perfect. And this one is just the single house. This is not that large property that we looked at a year or two ago, right?
That's correct.
This is just the one individual. All right.
Yes, sir.
Because it is something to keep an eye on, councilman. Is certainly, certainly looking, is certainly thinking ahead.
Yes, sir.
All right, any remaining questions on item five dot two? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adopt the ordinance annexing the subject property effective this evening?
So moved.
All right, motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any debate? Seeing none, please vote electronically if possible. Just state your vote for the record if you would please.
Yes.
All right, perfect. All right, motion having been made, seconded, and voted unanimously in favor, annexation five dash 25 passes. We just expanded the city a little bit again. All right, we will now move to item five dot three. Mr. Tauton?
Thank you, mayor. This is our third and final annexation request tonight. This will be for Tucker Trace. It's a non-contiguous annexation. If you'll recall, this was for a 120 single-family lot and four commercial lots for approval by council. Council continued this conditional zoning on November the 3rd until January 5th of 2026. At this time, staff is not aware of any withdrawal of the annexation, even though the zoning is not in place for the property at this time, which is okay. But I just wanted you to be aware of that. And if there's any other questions you might have, let me know about that particular bit of information. We'll move forward. This property is located on the south side of Tommy's Road between US 117 North and Dean's Lane. Owner is Mark's Farms LLC and applicant. Again, the request for rezoning was for residential six and general business conditional zoning Here's a property. If you can follow the pin here, let's say you're right here. I'm sorry. All the way around. Again, at this time, the non-contiguous annexation meets all of these requirements. Here's a picture of the road from the highway 42. There again is the proposed single-family subdivision with commercial lots up front along this Tom Street. Mayor, if you don't have any questions, any questions, please let me know.
I just want to be really clear. So, obviously, I want, I want to annex into the city because, you know, that's part of my role is to be able to expand the footprint, the corporate limits of, of the city when appropriate. By doing, by approving the annexation, that does not have any bearing on if the current proposal ultimately gets approved or not, right?
That's correct.
So ultimately, the annexation, we could do, the current, currently proposed development could get voted down. It remains in the city for whoever tries to develop it in the future, right?
That'd be correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. And again, we are not aware, like, they know, they know this is happening because it's been on, the public hearing has been noticed publicly.
Yes, sir.
They have had every opportunity to withdraw if they chose to, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They have, yes, sir. And unless they're present tonight and request in advance to do so, then of course, council can make that decision.
Of course, of course.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Counsel, any comments, questions? Yes, sir.
I was just going to point out that it's been my experience too, over the years with, with planning, that the reason that I would guess that the applicant in fact did not withdraw the request for the annexation is because whatever decision that this board makes moving forward with that property, it's going to have to be annexed in order to have utilities provided to it either way. So I would, if I had to guess, I would say the applicant probably wanted this to continue on. So this part's out of the way, and the only thing we have to do is, a council is make decision on what happens with the property once it's annexed. Would you?
I would agree with that. Yes, sir.
Counsel, any other comments, questions? All right, then let's move forward with the public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing for item five dot three on our agenda. It is annexation six dash 25, also known as Tucker Trace. Is there anyone to come forward and speak? All right, second call, is there anyone to come forward and speak on annexation six dash 25, item five dot three on our agenda? Third and final call, anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item five dot three on our agenda? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Counsel, are there any remaining questions on this one? All right, seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance annexing the property?
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion has been made and properly seconded to adopt the ordinance annexing the property. Is there any debate? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. All in favor, please vote by show of hands. All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. All right. Wonderful. We will keep moving with item five dot four. Mr. Livingston, I want to come back to you for this one.
Well, this is just legislative rezonings, these next two, so I will let the planning handle that as well.
All right, Mr. Tauton?
Counsel, we have two straight rezoning requests tonight. The first one will be for Mr. Paul T. Williams. Property is located on the west side of US 117 North between Carolina Commerce Drive and Tommy's Road. This is not too far from the proposed subdivision, which you just approved annexing. We'll show that in the next slide. The owner is Andrews Farms of Wayne County. The applicant is Mr. Paul T. Williams. He's looking at zoning property, which is currently zoned residential 16 to general business. The surrounding zoning is general business to the north, to the south, general business, to the east, general business, and R16. And to the west is general business, woodlands, and used as a contractor's lay-down yard. So here's a little bit of the property we were looking at that you just annexed here. But right here is the subject property. And again, all around this property is general business. And if the property, as you can tell, it's, it's, this business here used to be an old convenience store. I believe this is a, I forgot what brand service station that is, but this new service station, not long after it was built, this convenience store shut down. The convenience store is actually situated across two parcels. And if the rezoning is approved, these two parcels will be combined. This is the description of the R16 residential zoning district. If you have any questions, let me know. We have a description of the general business zoning district, which is to accommodate the widest range of uses, providing general goods and services to the community, and provide for the development of municipal service sites. Land use plan locates this parcel within the mixed-use two land use designation. The mixed-use two land use categories will allow a mixture of uses which may have an impact on or produce some conflict with lower-density districts. Let's see, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the land use and density recommendations of the UDO. Here's a picture of the old convenience store. Here's some property just to the east, which is the subject property, which is currently woodland. And of course, you'll see here's the property that's currently woodland. It's being rezoned. This is a rezoning for approximately 1.6 acres to be rezoned from R16 to general business. This is a straight rezoning. This is not a conditional zoning. So everything in the general business zoning district under the table of permitted uses would need to be considered as permitted uses by right. There are some special uses within the general business zoning district. And so if you have any questions, I have a copy of the general business table of permitted uses if anybody wants to look at it. But at this point in time, we do not know of any uses currently that the owner or the applicant are looking at at this time. The subject property is located east of North Carolina Warehousing and TA Loving Company off of North Williams Street. Again, the land parcel will be required to be recombined with other parcels in the same ownership and annexed into the city limits. We have distributed this, planning staff has distributed to the city engineering and fire marshal's office. City water and sewer available serve the site. It is not located in special flood hazard area. The staff's recommending approval of the request. The proposed zoning and range of uses are compatible with the zoning patterns and land uses. The opinion of staff is that the rezoning request is consistent with the recommendations of the comp plan and the land use plan map. We believe that this rezoning can provide for public safety and meet transportation utility demands, while maintaining sufficient levels of service to existing developments, and that the proposed general business zoning district will not impair or injure the health, safety, and welfare and safety of the public. The planning commission at their October 27th meeting voted to recommend approval. Council, city council is now requested to review the petition for rezoning, conduct a public hearing, and make a decision in accordance with the attached consistency statement to approve, deny, or table the request. If you have any questions, mayor, council, I'll be glad to answer them this time.
Procedurely, this one is a pure up-down vote, right?
Yes, sir.
Single up-down vote?
That's correct.
All right. Counsel, what questions do we have for Mr. Tauton before we sit, allow you to sit down? Anyone? All right, so with that, let's go ahead and open the public hearing for item five dot four. Our went backwards. Oh, we're good. All right. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing for item five dot four. This is RZ 325, Paul T. Williams' property. Is there anyone wishing to come forward and speak? Second call, item five dot four, RZ 325 on our agenda. Anyone wishing, wishing to come forward and speak? Third and final call, anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item five dot four, RZ 325? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Counsel, are there any questions for Mr. Tauton, Mr. Livingston, et cetera, on this item? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion has been made and properly seconded to adopt the ordinance as presented. All in favor, or is there debate? Sorry, is there debate? Seeing none, all in favor, please vote by show of hands. All in favor, please vote by show of hands. All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes, motion passes unanimously. All right. Is yours back up voting now? All right, perfect. We'll return to voting electronically on the next one. All right. Mr. Tauton, item five dot five for us.
Yes, sir. Mayor, our last item of business from the planning staff will be a rezoning proposal by Mr. Mark Ritchie. This property is located on the north side of West Grantham Street between Claridge Nursery Road Road and Neville Street. Approximately 1.75 acres is associated with this property. Mr. Ritchie is the owner and applicant. Current zoning is for the general industry zoning district, proposed zoning is for general business. Land use designation is industrial, the applicant's requesting a rezoning from general industry to general business.
Institutional or industry? Industry?
General business, yes, sir, from institutional, that's right, general industry, was there a talk of, from general industry to general business?
Okay, we're good.
Okay, all right, very good. So you'll notice to the north, general industry, to the south, general industry and general business, to the east, general industry, to the west, general industry and general Again, the property is highlighted there in blue, but right now, it is currently a part of this larger parcel, it's like the shape of a boot, like Wayne County's boot almost. But this section here is a multi-use commercial facility, and if the rezoning is approved, as you see here, it will be subdivided, and this property will sit on its own. Currently, there's an existing car wash there. The applicant believes that having a general business probably would make it more marketable, provide more uses for that particular spot. He is proposing to leave what you see in the rear as general industry. This is a straight rezoning request, there are no conditions that are being asked for, so all the uses in the general business zoning district need to be considered, including their special uses. You'll see the general industry description and the general business description. If you have any questions, please let me know. And this is the land use plan showing that it is part of an industrial land use designation. City's land use plan locates it within the industrial land use designation. These areas are established to protect industrial areas from the prime industrial operations and for the distribution of products at wholesale. The general business zoning district is not a corresponding zoning district within the industrial land use designation. Although not consistent with the future land use plan, the proposed rezoning will be compatible with surrounding zoning patterns and existing land uses. So again, this is a rezoning proposal for just under an acre to be rezoned to general business zoning district. You'll see the address below, previously operated as a car wash. Again, the applicant will subdivide the property into two separate land parcels in accordance with the respective zoning district if the rezoning is approved. We have no issues from either agency of the fire marshal or from city engineering. Staff's recommendation is to approve this rezoning request based off the range of uses permitted in the requested zoning district, since they're compatible with the surrounding zoning patterns and land uses. The rezoning is compatible with the city of Goldsboro's comp plan and map, that city services can be provided to meet transportation and utility demands, while sufficient levels of services are provided to existing developments, and that the proposed rezoning will not impair or injure the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. Planning commission at their October 27th meeting voted to recommend approval of this request. Now, mayor, I'll turn it back over to you for the public hearing. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Tauton? Hearing none, we will move to the public hearing. All right, we are, are open a public hearing for item 5 dot 5. This is RZ 425, property on Grantham Street. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak? Second call, anyone wishing to come forward and speak for item 5 dot 5, RZ 425 on our agenda? Third and final call, anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item 5 dot 5? All right, hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Counsel, are there any remaining questions for Mr. Tauton? All right, seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented?
So moved.
All right, motions are made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to adopt the ordinance as presented, is there any debate? Seeing none, please vote electronically if possible. All votes haven't been cast, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Tauton.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence, do we have anything for close this evening from you? No?
I believe Councilwoman Weeks was speaking before I could even respond.
I was just wondering what your opinion on the matter was.
I was just helping you out.
All right, then we will move to our consent agenda. Item 7, Mr. Livingston, if you would please brief us, or hear any remaining questions on 7-1 and 7-2.
Thank you, mayor. Item 7.1 is the approval of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, what was presented at the last meeting, and item 7.2 is a revision of the Wayne County United Soccer Club Agreement, and I'll entertain any questions, or should have any for me.
Item 7 dot 2, again, this is something that council approved months ago, and then the, the technical correction, there was a term change, it wasn't a financial change, what was it?
No, no financial change, it was the period of the term.
Yeah. The start and end date, basically.
And the termination clause was lengthened.
Okay, perfect. So to council, again, this is something that we have seen, we have approved, are there any objections to anything on the consent agenda? Are any remaining questions, anything on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motions have been made and properly seconded, is there any remaining debate? Hearing none, please vote electronically. All right, all votes haven't been cast, motion passes unanimously, consent agenda is approved. All right, there is no old business, so we will move directly into new business. If we could hear item 9 dot 1, Mr. Livingston?
So this is a road run sponsorship request. I believe the petitioner is here, and if they don't mind coming up and elaborating on that sponsorship request, please.
Hold on, Neil.
This one is a...
I'm sorry, I thought you were reaching for me.
No. Neil, you jumped the gun, you're next.
Don't go, don't go far, we're going...
You're next.
Yeah.
I'm Scott Edwards with the Grand Goldsboro Road Run and Sunrise Kiwanis, and I'm here to speak to you about having our event down on Center Street again this year. We've, we've been serving Goldsboro, having our road run for 47 years, we're the second oldest event in the state of North Carolina on a road run, and we're looking to have the event Saturday, March 28th of 2026. And my purpose of being here is to try to get access and continue using Center Street like we had, have had the last 15 years. We've had it available for us to start and finish our run, basically showcase the city of Goldsboro with that as well. You know, it's a short event, it only lasts from like 9 to 11:30 on Saturday morning, and we're in and out and gone by well before noon. Our event, you know, our purpose is, you know, to raise money for the children and youth of Wayne County, the needy children and youth, that's what the money goes for, we have a golf tournament and a road run for that purposes. Another purpose is to, you know, to showcase the city of Goldsboro, you know, to have people come downtown to, we'll put logos on the t-shirts, you know, put city of Goldsboro on that. One of our requests is to basically have access to the, to Center Street, but also to, to get a waiver on the tier four, $400 fee that, that is levied on that. Our costs, our costs go straight to supporting the people in Wayne County, and we spend so much money upfront putting on the event, having it timed and so forth, to USDA regulations and so forth, so everything that we can, we want to put into things like reach out and read, the boys and girls club here, the children's home, anything that's mostly in Wayne County and city of Goldsboro. Just, we average about 220 people a year, we've been up to as many as 330, we've been down to close to just over 100 just after the pandemic. The only two years that we didn't have it was, we didn't have it downtown was when streetscape was under construction, we had to go down to Stony Creek, and of course, we didn't have it in 2020, the year of the pandemic. So my request to, to you guys is to, we like to have Goldsboro as a sponsor of our event, and, you know, give that to, have free advertisement for sponsorship on the shirt and online as well, and also on the brochures, you know, the sponsorship, you see the Do More, See More on the logos, I've, I've seen it up here on the screen here a little bit before. But anyway, that's, that's my request, we, we support, you know, up to 20 organizations in the city of Goldsboro and Wayne County, all over, and that's where all the money goes for, everybody else, we're all volunteers for Kiwanis.
So, counsel, it certainly is not abnormal for this council to choose to do a, a waiver of the fee in, as an in-kind contribution in return for, you know, for marketing for nonprofit organizations that have events. The manager, by, by right, under policy, as this, this being a legacy event, could have, I believe, handled that piece of it, but this is in front of council, to be able to discuss if we want to do the waiver as an in-kind contribution. So really, that is the main question for this council, again, it's something that is not abnormal for us to do. Mr. Livingston, if you have any comments or questions?
No, it's just that, it's the waiver, the fee that's in question here, whether or not, you know, I don't have the authority to waive a fee in this, in this regard. I have to be the city council and have to do that in exchange for sponsorship. Unless you decided to do that for every year going forward, and saying that would be, you could do that, not have them come up here every year if you wanted to. But that's, that may not be what you want to do, because new councils could come in the future.
I think we probably need to go year by year, I wouldn't want to, you know, encumber in that way, you know, future additions of this council, but that being said, I...
I didn't recommend it, I just said it could.
Yeah, it could, could. I believe it's happened in the past for this event though, hasn't it?
My understanding, yes, it has.
Okay. Either way, I support doing it, just like I've supported doing it for other, for some other large nonprofit events that have happened in the city. That's just my humble opinion, I'm one vote on it. But counsel, what comments, questions do we have?
I got a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I understand what you're talking about, a legacy event, I was trying to review our policies that we had put in place on the races. So I have a couple of questions for you, Scott, because I'm 100, matter of fact, I benefit from the race, you guys give generously to us, but if the race is from 9 to noon, okay, you're saying 9 to noon, then we would shut, we would have to shut it down even earlier, probably 7:30, so that you guys could get everything into place. Are we talking about, two questions, are we talking about shutting down both sides of Center Street? Because I get, I get that you guys have been doing it a long, long time, okay? But the makeup, the cosmetic of downtown is totally different now, we have restaurants, we have breakfasts going on, and so are we talking about cutting, shutting down both sides of Center Street? And then the other thing is, I was thinking that our city manager had gotten with Run the East, because I know you guys use Run the East, and we had looked at doing a different, where we're starting down at the hub, so that the businesses that are on Center Street that are open for breakfast and lunch would not have to take away that parking. So those are two questions I have.
Part of our problem is that we're a bigger race than that race was, we, we have people starting at three different places on Center Street, and if they're all at one place, you have them overlapping and jammed in on one place. We start at Walnut Street, the 5K starts, 10K starts at the fire department, and then the 1 mile, which takes up most of the Center Street timing, about 30 minutes or so, it starts down at Spruce, goes down toward Ash and comes back, and we all finish at the hub. So, and part of the issue, also, you had to consider the NC DOT as part of it, because the other race had to go back down to John Street, and they were going down John Street, I don't know how they got the, approved from the DOT with that much of John Street being accessed, maybe it's because they're a smaller race, but I know last year, we had to get a permit from the DOT just to cross it and get the lights on flash, and I'm not sure if they would even allow us to go down John Street for three or four blocks like that other route at home, so that's just a small piece there, but it's just so much more convenient for us to split up three different races, because we have three different races and start them in different places and have them all finish at the same place. And normally, the last runner is finished by, you know, 10:30 or 11, you know, and we're cleaning up and gone from the site, basically by 11:30, I mean, we're done and gone. And, and half of Center Street is open by, you know, 9:30 or 10 or so, the half that's the far side of the hub is, is open once the 1-milers get past that, we don't use it for anything else other than finishing, basically.
And then Matt, the other concern I had was, I don't know what happened last year, but the parking lot beside of the DGDC, for some reason, got closed during the race, so there was absolutely nowhere for any employees or any staff to park, because Center Street was shut down and the parking lot was shut down. So employees that are on Center Street were having to walk all the way down to the hub to park. So that's a concern for me, that I believe that we would at least need to leave that parking, parking lot open, so that people who are actually on Center Street would have somewhere to park.
Yeah, I remember too.
Yeah, we almost don't really need to shut down much of Center Street once the walkers get by, because it's, our other streets are open, and people are driving by the runners on the other streets, you know, Mulberry Street, you know, as well.
Would it be an option, mayor, that if it is approved, or Matt, whomever, that once that last runner has got through, that we could go ahead and open that section of Center Street, so that the businesses on that end could function?
I think that would be the ideal solution, is, you know, if you have a monitoring...
And formally do that, in a lot of ways, we kind of open it up, because people start coming down there, and we...
And I think you guys did everything right last year, I think it was on our part, we didn't communicate through the proper channels, and so that parking lot inadvertently was shut down, and there was nowhere to park.
Police department did a great job helping us out last year, and a lot of personnel there, and it was super helpful.
We'll make sure John's, I don't know what happened last year, never got a good answer on that one.
Counselwoman Boyett, and then Lawrence. Actually, Counselwoman Weeks, did you have anything further?
Sir, these are just...
I didn't hear, I didn't hear the answer to Councilwoman Weeks' question regarding, are we, are we closing both sides of Center Street?
Yeah, I do sign up to close up both sides, because the 1 mile runs down the, the opposite side of the hub, that they walk down, excuse me, they walk down and then they walk back, that's little kids, normally, a lot of times, that's why we, that's only why we have that part closed.
And what time does the first runners go out?
Not, everybody starts at 9 o'clock.
Everybody starts at 9.
And the 1-milers are usually done by 9:30 to 10, so that one side of the street is pretty much open.
Since we're trying to iron something out here, so that we don't have to deal with this in the future, is it possible that maybe it would be a help to roll it back 30 minutes or some, something another, I'm just sort of thinking out loud to how to best mitigate, you know, the, the concerns of the businesses, so I mean, it's just toss that out there.
Well, and if we can get a commitment that we're, that we're reopening, what would be the south side of Center Street, right? You know, this, yeah, the, the south side of Center Street, you know, effectively 9:45, you know, that I think also helps mitigate the impacts a lot as well.
The south side, meaning this side of...
The side facing the Paramount.
Okay.
Right?
That's the part of the west side, I hope.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
That's the west side.
Yeah. Yeah.
And leaving the parking lot open.
And leaving that John Street parking lot open, or figuring out how to get that right. Did you have anything further?
Well, I was just going to say, and if we can work through this and get, get it all worked out, I agree that it needs to be placed on the agenda, because there's going to be another council that comes along after us, but maybe to make matters easier, we could put it as in a consent agenda item, and that way, we only have to address it if we need to, and then that saves the trouble of presentation again, just food for thought. That was all my comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Person?
Well, you guys already said it, the only concern that I actually saw last year for me was the parking lot over there, because once you ran down the, the side where Laughin' Out was, and then you came back up that way, it was freed anyway, so maybe it's a matter of documenting it.
Yeah, our race is a, is a double loop for the 10K, they run that loop twice. When the 10Kers come back around, they run back down Walnut Street and loop it again and finish, so that everybody finishes up. They start at the same time and they finish at the same location. It makes our personnel easier, because we, we just, you know, you get shorthanded on volunteers, and it's hard to... volunteers and it's hard to, we try to manage every intersection, especially the ones with the stoplights and things like that, to have an adult there.
So I just want to go on record saying I support the Kiwanis, I support races, and I support shutting the streets down, down Center Street for those events. However, to this board and to staff, we have sat here for a few minutes and found creative ways to accommodate this race. We have offered suggestions, and we had an applicant come before us last year. With little to no conversation, we said no, and created a policy that supported our no. So I want us to be very careful, because the community is watching, and even though this is a legacy event, we didn't give any other races an opportunity to become legacy. It was an automatic no, they had the same request, they had the same timeframes, and it was a no. So I want us to consider that we put a policy in place, we should follow the policy, whatever that looks like, because I'm pretty sure that organization could have offered us a logo on a t-shirt as well. They could have, and they, and I think they even offered to, to share that the city of Goldsboro supported their event. So I just want us to keep that in mind. I support what you got going on, and I'm okay with closing the streets at any time, you know, but we have turned down other races with the same request, and I just want us to remember that when we start making decisions.
Like in the old days, we used to have to get a signature from every business owner approving it. I mean, just to be honest with you, we used to have to, you know, to sign the form, everybody up and down the street, up and down Walnut Street, and it may have been affected or may possibly have been open at the time during the race.
Pretty cool business owners, they used
Yeah.
It's just a fee.
All right, council, any remaining comments, questions? All right, hearing none. Procedurally, Madam Clerk, help me make sure we get a drafted motion correct. Is there a motion? Well, it's not sure, yeah, okay, yeah. I was going to say in-kind, it doesn't really matter though. If everyone understands what that means, we're approving the sponsorship as a $400 waiver of the fee, so effectively it's an in-kind contribution.
Right. Fix the parking
All right. All right, so is there a motion for that?
For both things?
Yes, for both things.
With the stipulations of everything?
Yes, with the stipulations of getting
So moved, I make a motion.
Perfect. All right, motion's been made and properly seconded. Is there any further debate?
So, quick, real quick.
Yes, ma'am.
So is that going to be a thing that we do, if organizations say, can you waive this and I'll give you this, because that's something we have to consider? Because why would we tell one organization no, and we told another organization yes? I'm in support, I'm in support of it. I'm just saying, that's something that we have to consider, because we literally just told somebody no last year with the exact same request and desire for downtown, and we told them no.
Well, my, not that it's, not it's really necessary, but my, my response is, I think you have to look at the size of the event and the impact of the event as well. You know, just like we, with other parades that want to happen along Center Street, you know, we have certainly done the waiver of fees for in-kind contributions for those sorts of things. I think we've got to look at, you know, there's, we want folks to have events in downtown on Center Street. I think we've also got to look at, do we need to have a certain weekend that we all, that we set aside as, and I'm thinking about with something that Boston and New York do, even though they're much, much larger, that is, if you want to have your event and you anticipate runners under a certain cap, we're going to set aside this morning to have a multi-run day, that kind of thing, for those events to be able to kind of grow up and still be able to use that amazing venue, and then have set up their, their tent, their camp and individual pieces, and then be able to have a dedicated start time. But I think that, I think we got to figure something out there, and I also think you have to look at the size of each individual event. Because, you know, like, like Counselwoman, like actually both Counselwoman said, we got to look at the impact of the businesses, but I think we also got to look at allowing different organizations an opportunity to benefit from the amazing venue that we have on Center Street and allowing them to become legacy events. So how we get there, I think, is still a conversation we got to finalize, but I would certainly be in favor of finding a way to package up an opportunity for some of the smaller ones to be able to participate and be able to take advantage of this, of the space. That's just my humble opinion. That's not on the agenda at this particular moment, but that is my opinion. All right, motion's been made, properly seconded. Any further debate? Hearing none, we'll call the vote, it's already up there. Please vote electronically if possible. All right, if you would just state your vote for the record?
Yes.
All right, perfect. All right, all votes having been tallied, motion passes seven, nothing. Thank you so much.
Thank y'all for your time. I appreciate all y'all do in the city. I know it takes up a lot of your time, and thank y'all.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, now, Mr. Livingston, let's move to item 9.2. If you have anything to add, then we'll invite Mr. Nilla.
Okay. Oh, sir, it's just the Capital Campaign for the Wayne County Development Alliance, and Mr. Benton is here to give us an overview of some of the things they've got going on and what they're looking for.
Thanks for allowing us to present on behalf of the Wayne County Development Alliance. I am the chairman of the Impact Wayne Capital Campaign. And of course, when you say I'm the chairman of the Capital Campaign, there's one person, it's me, so there he is. But just a couple of things about me. I've lived in Wayne County my entire life. I've worked in the city of Goldsboro since 93 for BBNT, which turned to Truist, and ended my career as the market president there for BBNT in Wayne County. I've served on the Development Alliance Board for two separate occasions, was chairman on one of those occasions. Our request today is for $150,000, which is slightly increased over $125,000 that was the previous campaign. And I think we can all agree that the cost of doing business has gone up pretty substantially in that same period of time. So since our last campaign, you know, we've really evolved our operating model, moving new industry recruitment to a regional concept. So there was a partnership established, which, with the Global Transport, which includes Wayne, Lenore, Green, and the Global Transport. You know, myself, I was a bit skeptical of it, but you can't argue with the success we've had. You look at the 1,400 new jobs that were created in the last five years and the 400 million in capex spending, which was, is unprecedented. And I will tell you that I feel like, we didn't do an official tally, but I think that probably does what we did the last 15 years. So really, really good stuff. Couple of ones that I would like to highlight, the Mount Olive Pickle Company expansion, which is out, outside of town of Goldsboro, 45 million in capex spending, 167 new jobs, and additional $50 million in infrastructure grants. We had Pelson in the industrial park with 86 million in capex spending, 216 jobs, and this is the first U.S. presence for this company, they're a Turkish company, first U.S. presence, which I thought is pretty incredible. And then, of course, on, near the fairgrounds, we had GE, Walkershaw, 140 million in capex spending, 330 jobs, with an average wage of $62,000. So it's really interesting that all these companies are really either in the industrial park or close proximity to Goldsboro, so good things. So you may ask, what are we going to do with our campaign funds going forward? Well, what we've found out is, to attract and retain industry, you've got to have product. And when we had the two shelters in the industrial park, it attracted a number of prospective companies came. Pelson was a big success, and we're now in the planning stages for an additional shell buildings to be constructed. With the success, with the success we've had in the park, however, there is a problem. You know, when these, these sites are 10 to 15 acres each, we're now running out of land. So the WCD must acquire or control additional acres for future development, and that will be one of our major capital expenses going forward, is acquiring land or getting control of that land. We actually did some interviews with an outside consultant on both our investors and our community leaders, and one thing was determined, our staffing was simply not sufficient. So what we have done is, this past year, we have hired an administrative position that's going to assist the existing industry director, Julie Graham. In 2020, the WCD president at the time, which was Mark Pope, assumed the role of the president of the NC GDPEDR, North Carolina Global Transport Economic Development Region. But it's just simply not practical for Mark to perform that job and do the job for the WCD. So the WCD Board has, has approved putting a part-time position of a WCD President in place in 2026. Both these positions will be adding expense for the WCD. So in wrapping up, you know, the WCD has been extremely successful in the past five years. Our regional alignment for industry recruitment, coupled with product and the willingness for our county and city to work together to recruit and retain industries paramount. We must continue to develop our industrial base so our county and our city and our citizens prosper. And I'll take any questions about the campaign that you have.
So this evening, there's not a specific, a specific ask. This is kind of giving an overview of where, where WCD has been in the last few years, the organizations that have landed, you know, right here in Wayne County and in Goldsboro. You know, the, the list on the back of, on the back of the flyer, you, you actually are the one that pointed this out, just the overwhelming majority of those are ETJ, if not inside the city, is pretty, pretty neat, pretty, pretty neat. Council, what we're going to need to do at some point soon is figure out how we want to support WCD. And it's going to have to be something that the WCD and our manager, you know, kind of hash out, and ultimately, there's going to be a request that comes back to council. That's not in front of us this evening, the actual amount is not in front of us this evening. But at a future meeting, or there will be. So what I'll encourage you to do is ask some questions. If you're not ready this evening, or you prefer to ask them in a one-on-one setting, reach out to Mr. Benton and ask to have a conversation with he and the manager, and kind of wrap your head around what it is that we want WCD to do. Now, going into this next year, you have the City of Goldsboro Business Development Plan that is intended to do a certain piece of the pie. WCD is intended to do a certain piece of the pie, and we want to make sure that we talk about how those are going to interact together and how they're going to support each other, because, believe me, they are not designed to compete with each other, nor is their bandwidth in either, in either particular piece to compete. So what I'll encourage, and then I'll stop talking, is if you have any questions this evening, ask them. But then also, let's set some time aside, if you want to do it one-on-one, or if you want to do it in small groups, that's fine too. So let's make sure that we have an understanding of what WCD as a partner for the city does, and how we're interested in moving forward over the next year. So without any comments or questions for Mr. Benton? Yes, sir. So one, Mr. Mayor, I thought he did put a dollar amount out there.
I did, sure, I did. $150,000 is what we're asking for.
Right.
And when I, when I, when I put that number out there, what our campaign asks are, is say, we'll do a number for five years, for example. So in this situation, we ask for $150,000, starting in 2026, it will be $30,000 a year for five years.
But, and to your point, you're exactly right, there is, yes, that number is out there as a top-line proposal, as, as has been our practice. I don't ask council to see something to vote on, something in the same meeting.
Absolutely.
And so what I meant is, this is in front of us, it's not, not as an action or a vote item this evening. Yes, sir.
I got you. And my next thing is, do we have an active MOU with this organization?
We don't. This is something that we have been working on, trying to see if we can replicate the county's MOU with WCD. There has been, there had been agreements, there has been the most recently signed one that was actually under a previous city manager that outlined specific things that they were going to do, but it wasn't titled MOU. But there was some, some direction, some expectations, but that one predates me.
So, so I will say, I have some apprehension if we move forward without a MOU, clearly defining the roles and the deliverables that will be for the city. And then my last thing is, who selects the members?
Members of the board?
Yes.
Do you know the answer to that? Because you have bylaws, but I, I'm not on your board.
So bylaws are, so, and again, I'm, it's been about three years since I've been off the board, because I'm just a, I'm a fundraiser. But, you know, you've got a certain number from the city that's selected by the city. There are certain members from the, from the county, and then there's two sitting county commissioners on the board, and another's one city council member on our board, which is, you know, Mrs. Chris.
But, but who, so the city selects those who sit on behalf of Goldsboro? So that, that's what, is that what I'm hearing? I'm just making sure that I heard that.
I believe so, but I want to see the actual bylaws to be able to confirm that, because I, I don't know the answer to that question in black and white.
I can find, I can find all that out for you and get you that information, for sure.
Yes, sir.
So, and, and Mr. Benton's been away for a bit, so I would suggest to get the manager and any member of council together with a member of the, either Mark or someone from our executive committee to be able to answer those questions. And the mayor knows this, because his father was the one that signed the original documents that set this, this in motion, that this organization grew up out of the old committees of 100, which had nothing to do with the municipalities. It was, it was private, privately formed organization. And I don't, I'm not going to misspeak, obviously, but I'm pretty sure that the current members of the board are selected on, selected by the executive committee and voted on by the board in much the same fashion that the DGDC board exists and operates as an independent entity. To my knowledge, the, there was, whenever the committees of 100 were merged, you had the Mount Olive Committee of 100, you had the Goldsboro Committee of 100, which I was a member of even way back then. But when those committees
I think there was a Northern Wayne as well.
Yeah. And when those committees of 100 were put together and formed, there was no direct involvement that I recall from an elected member of any municipality. It was called Goldsboro area members, Mount Olive area members, and it was not a part of, or intended to be, a part of the elected body. Since an elected body, and I'm saying all this so I can be corrected if I misspeak on anything moving forward, so it's on the record. So moving forward into that process, the county members, because it's ultimately a county's organization, the county members are generally elected officials that sit on there, but from the Wayne County piece. But the Goldsboro piece and the Mount Olive piece are simply Goldsboro area people. That I do not think there is any requirement or any written part of the bylaws that specifically talks about an elected official. So that being said, we as a city council, if we said, okay, we're going to put forth one of our members of this elected body, which this council chose me to do so, then that name was put forth to the WCD Board, and then the WCD Board voted on and accepted that member as a board member into the organization. That's what I think, and someone will certainly correct me if, if I'm wrong. But I would absolutely suggest two things, that any member of the council that has questions, meet with, meet with the manager and have the manager pair together with the appropriate folks on that side. I'll be glad to help any way that I can. As, as Mr. Benton pointed out here, this, this campaign happens every five years, I think this is the third one, because I was actually a part of the fundraising committee on the initial one that happened. So the ask, as he said, is more this year, and so far, the, the WCD and Mr. Benton have been successful in making that additional ask and being able to say, this is why. We've got to have, and I've spoke to this recently, we've got to have product out of the ground, coming out of the ground. The more that we have, the better off we are. We've sold a proven track record of that. But as that organization continues to flourish and do its job, it also is going to need a larger staff. So all we're doing as the city of Goldsboro is, we're a member that's being asked to make a contribution a contribution to the organization, the same as another industry, or the same as another municipality, or the county, or whatever.
And I think we're not trying to replicate anything that's going on with the city. We'd just like to be your industrial developer. That's what we'd like to do.
Please, good.
Sure.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. Proxim, and then we'll come back to you. Go ahead.
I just would like the opportunity to sit down with someone to talk about your top-line amount that you gave us, the benefits and the requirements. So I am requesting time to sit down and talk.
Absolutely, for sure. Absolutely.
I ask the same thing. I do want to sit down and learn a little bit more about the makeup and how members are selected.
Okay.
Because I truly want to make sure that the city of Goldsboro has ample representation in the voice into what's going on. But I also think that the city manager and the county, because this seems to be dominated by the county, just to be honest with you. So I want to be able to sit down and we come up with an M O U with some deliverables and what our expectations are as a city, before we vote on any amount of money, just to make sure that we're all on the same sheet of music and we're operating crystal clear. And just listening to Councilman Boyet, and he broke it down, and I really understand it, but we might need to modernize the method that we're using to select members.
Let's, sorry, we'll make sure that everyone has a chance to speak that hasn't yet. Is anyone who's not yet smoking an opportunity?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did I hear clearly, there's two county commissioners on the-
Correct, correct.
Just one from the city?
Yes.
Okay. And so would it be ever possible to discuss maybe having two people from the city council, since you have two-
I mean, that is above my pay grade. I do know they have a significant financial stake in what we do. But, I mean, it's certainly, I'm sure, but again, that's beyond me right now.
Yes, sir.
I think it would be a good idea, if you don't mind, to go ahead and forward or get together so that the council can have an opportunity, if it's feasible, to be able to review the bylaws. Because I don't think that the bylaws state, there was an adjustment made to them in the last 12 months or so. And again, I'm saying all this out loud so it can be corrected. I do not think the bylaws specifically state any body, any body of any organization having a guaranteed elected official on the board. I think that the way the bylaws structure was, it still says Goldsboro area people, Mount Olive area people, Wayne County area people. But if we have an opportunity to see that, and our council is going to have an opportunity to see the bylaws, if that, I don't think that's unreasonable, so that those that are making the decision are able to know what exactly the structure is of the organization that we as an elected body are choosing to make a donation to. I don't think that asking for an M O U-
Absolutely. We've talked about that already, about getting that together. That's not going to be a problem. You'd want to have that in front of you prior to do that.
I'm excited about the opportunity to continue the work that that board's doing. And I think it's good work, and I'm looking forward to being a part of this board that votes to continue our support.
And I'll just tell you, the momentum we've got right now is really good. The industrial park is, of course, the thing, the industrial park is filling, and we're going to need to acquire or get control of additional acres. So that's something we need to, definitely need to work on.
Counsel, good discussion. I think it's been really, I think it's been impactful that certain things that I've said very much, very frankly, to you, as well as the leadership at W C D A, that we've got to have documentation of roles and responsibilities. We've got to have these things in place. Counsel has certainly made that very clear, that it doesn't really need to come back on the agenda until we have some of those things that we can actually vote on. And so, yeah.
So copy the bylaws, you want an M O U on the-
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anything else we need to have available?
I think it's most important-
And I believe I also heard something about having like, maybe just like a little work session where we can sit down and just answer questions. And we can do that in a, you know, some kind of closed session, just have a conversation around, you know, what we do. And I can, perhaps I can bring Mark Pope and Julie Graham, existing industry person here, and we can have a conversation, kind of show you how we do what we do.
That'd be good.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anything else?
Well, I was just saying, we can't have that kind of conversation.
We would have to do it, yeah, we'd have to do it broken up. We'd get it right. I'm certainly not going to usurp any of the public meetings laws.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Take care.
Appreciate it. All right, it is seven o'clock on the nose. Let's take a quick, y'all want to roll? All right, let's roll. All right, all right, all right. I can see it too. I'm there. I'm operating out of courtesy and consistency here. All right, item nine dot three, Mr. Lu, I'm here. I think you're up. Mr. Livingston?
Well, it's a quick background, you know, we're successfully moved over into Edgewood, and things are going well there, and entertaining a lot more programs and things like that. But one of the challenges we have is we need to rename it so that we can have a lot more of our events and things like that, so it doesn't get confused with the other Edgewood School. But I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Felicia, she can explain it better than me. That's why she's the recreation director, I'm not. Where's yours?
Good evening, everyone. As the city manager has said, we've moved into the location formerly known as the Edgewood School. Edgewood still operates. There are students that are attending Eastern Wayne, and it's called, make sure I get it right, Edgewood at Eastern Wayne. So that's why we were like, we need to come up with another name. Also, per the lease agreement, is some language in there with the Wayne County Public School System and School Board that does stipulate we need to distinguish ourselves as separate from the school system for liability reasons. I get it. And so staff and I have talked amongst ourselves, and we've also met with our Recreation Advisory Commission. And we like the name Peachtree Street Recreation Center for some obvious reasons. The address is 1601 Peachtree Street, the building front's on Peachtree Street. And so-
It's too logical. It's too logical.
I know, it's too logical, it's too logical. But, you know, trying to keep it simple so people know where we are, because we are literally telling people when they call us, well, you know where the, oh, Edgewood School was? That's where we're at. Or we're like, the property formerly known as, I feel like I'm Prince, you know, but it's like, the property formerly known as Edgewood Community Development School. And so for marketing purposes, and when we do flyers, when we do reservations, finance isn't here, but it's like, we can do room rentals, but we can't do room rentals, because if we put it in the system, it's going to look funky. Like, we could say Herman Park, but Herman Park is closed. And so for, you know, all of these purposes, that's not good. And so we just need to have a name so we can move forward. And so that's why I'm here before you tonight.
Counsel, we've discussed the need for the name change, we've discussed the logic behind this particular proposal, and we've discussed that it has been presented and discussed at Recreation Advisory Commission, that they were in favor. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the name Peachtree Street Recreation Center as presented?
Someone.
All right, motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to adopt the resolution as presented, please vote electro, is there any debate? Hearing none, please vote electronically.
My wheel's spinning over here. Yes.
All right, all votes haven't been cast, and the affirmative motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, item nine dot five, something that's, I'll go on the record, I asked for some assistance with, just kind of wanting to have some guardrails and guide rails in place for these different things and some consistency. Would you like to brief?
No, you can.
Go ahead.
Essentially, I'm just going to keep it really short. Where they, in your proposal there, there's an ordinance that talks about the criteria that we would use for, you know, resolutions and proclamations. And I'm not going to read it all there to you, but I think it does help fine-tune what we do or don't do. And so it's there for your consideration. Obviously, it's new business, so maybe you could talk about it tonight, and we can tweak it, or if you feel like it's good, we can bring it back on the consent agenda on the 15th.
Counsel, this is presented to be able to add a little bit of clarity and distinction between what constitutes a letter or-
This is a policy, not an ordinance.
Right.
I stand corrected by the attorney.
Words do matter, even though they're inherently ambiguous.
They do when you call it an ordinance.
Yeah, understood. So the purpose of this was to create a universal understanding of the distinctions between what is letter versus proclamation versus resolution, even though, of course, there is some overlap and there is some gray area, but it is an attempt at creating a little bit of structure. So counsel, any comments or feedback on the policy as presented?
I like it.
So with this, as is our practice with councils, unless there's any objection, we will have it on the consent agenda for our next meeting, just to allow council an opportunity to provide any feedback between now and then, if they so choose. All right. So with that, I will move on to the city manager's report. Mr. Livingston?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple items here. We held our initial budget committee meeting. I'm thankful to the budget committee for giving us some guidance for the rest, the information for the rest of the board. Our goal is to hold the line on property tax. We'll move ahead with a baseline operational budget, meaning that department heads will be instructed to submit budget line items that are at or below current F Y 25, 26 budget amounts. As many of you witnessed, we had a great Lights Up Downtown event. I sent a little Placer AI notice out there, 10,300 or so attendees. And best of all, I guess, there's a lot of smiles on kids' faces and everybody having fun and great social media. You know, it was all very positive. We're on track to get our audit complete, so that's, we have that coming to you on the 15th of December. I've got to do some things there, but we're wrapping that up towards closure and presentation on the 15th of December. Most notably, we're seeing increases in all our fund balances. We've really done a phenomenal job, and I'm not going to credit myself, or the finance staff is really the ones that have done this, but also the elected leaders here over the last several years to improve the city's finances as much as we have. It's nothing short of phenomenal, but I want to caution that, let you know that we're still not where, you know, we need to be as we compare ourselves with other cities, but it's been tremendous. But we're looking to add about a four and a half million dollars more back to the unassigned fund balance and the general fund alone. Finished up the department work plans, and those are in this book here. I'm not going to go over all of them with you, but those are things that we'll talk about at another date. And that just helps guide us with all the numerous dozens and dozens of projects that we've got going on and initiatives that we've got going on simultaneously throughout the city. As I said last time, we've got a work plan, the first two weeks, sort of a game plan for the new ACM. They will be setting up meetings with individual council members. I want her to get to know each of you and hear your concerns, or just to meet and greet as well. And again, I send out some information, won't go into detail there on KC Mobile Home Park, and you can see that coming to you. On the 15th, we've got the C I P presentation as well. That's been something that's leading up to the beginning of the budget season. And we're working on a significant list of accomplishments for the mayor and city council as requested by one of our council members here. Octavius is helping lead that up. And I'm also looking at doing a State of the City review in January, early February, just to follow up on some things along those lines. And that's all I've got, Mayor.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Mr. City Manager, when it comes to that State of the City, would you consider a different time so that more people from the city can, more of our residents can attend? Sometimes the morning is just not the best time for people to come and support it, but if you would consider.
Absolutely, yeah. I'm trying, I'm thinking of new ideas on how to roll this out. We haven't done it in a while, and I don't know how.
Well, to that point, counsel, there is even the idea of doing a recorded one, just simply doing a video that could then, of course, be enjoyed and then having, you know, a set time that from this hour this day, that hour that day, if there's questions, you know, try to be able to answer things. I don't know, there's creative ways to do it.
One more thing I almost forgot to mention, as you see in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which we adopted tonight, there is a, you know, we're looking at what should be the next steps with T C Colley. We've moved all our equipment and things out of there and repurposed them over in, well, now it's Peachtree, I'll have to call it Peachtree. And so, you know, we've got a Mr. Ashford that's still operating over there, he provides a good service, but at the same time, you know, we have to start thinking about what the future of that looks like, because I don't know that the city really has a long-term need for recreation programming at this point. And we've got, I think she left, but that's something I want you to be thinking about.
Any other questions for Mr. Livingston on his report? Hearing none. Let's move to Mayor and council member comments. It is the top of the month, so we'll begin with a member from District Two, Councilman Boyet, for your-
All righty. I just want to wish everybody, I know they've already had a Thanksgiving, but I hope everyone had a happy Thanksgiving. I know I did and enjoyed time with family. Also like to thank the staff and everybody involved with the Lights Up that we just had. That was a very successful event, as the manager pointed out, and it took a lot of work by a lot of our staff to be able to get that done. Berkeley Project, as everybody knows, has been a little issue, but we're getting closer every week that goes by. And again, it's on time and should be completely done in the next few weeks. So that'll be a plus when that's completely done. And last but not least, thank you to all of our hard-working city employees and our staff and all those that support that. You're valued, appreciated, and this city could not run without you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor, for yours?
I have no comment tonight.
All right, go ahead.
I just want to thank everybody for coming to Lights Up, and I was glad to see everybody. It was a lot of fun, and I enjoyed. I want to do just a shout-out to Jamie and his crew today for going out and getting the trash that was left over the holidays. They were extremely happy at North End. Thank you very much, and thank you to all the staff.
Counselor?
No comment.
Counselor?
Mayor, I want to echo what everybody else has said. Thank you guys, to all the staff, the D G D C, Mr. Jeff Holtz, and even our city manager was up there entertaining on the stage. And so thank you for a job well done. We'll see everybody at the Christmas Parade Saturday at four o'clock. And then the last thing is, thank you guys for the resolution for Ms. George. She definitely was a she-wrote to me, and her life and her godly, powerful legacy. Like, I just hope that I can carry just a little bit of what she had. She was just a powerful influence in our city. We honor her legacy.
Counselor, for yours?
Echo the sentiments of hoping everyone had a blessed Thanksgiving, as well as the turnout downtown. I do want to speak on the Berkeley Project. I just ask that we look at that light coming off of Royal Avenue going into the new area, because the turn light is a caution light. So at certain parts of the day, the traffic gets backed up, and there could be potentially an accident right there. Just look at that. If we could get a turn arrow there, instead of just a flashing caution arrow, that would be helpful. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Perfect. I just want to echo so many of the comments already, the amount of work that goes into being able to host, you know, over 10,000 people from our community right here on Center Street, Center of Goldsboro, the heart of Wayne County, is just, it's amazing. The folks that were out there at 5:30 in the morning getting stuff set up and then staying until midnight that day. I got to go around and shake hands and say thank you, but I really do mean it, thank you, because these things simply do not happen without the brute force labor to make it actually happen. So thank you to every single one of you that was involved. And I know we're about to do it to you again with the Christmas Parade and with some other holiday events. It's going to be fantastic, but I know it's also a heavy load for those that are doing the work. I see you, thank you, and please keep- I say you, thank you, and please keep it up. So with that, that concludes my comments. Mr. Lawrence, you've already said that we don't have a closed session, so I'm not going to give you a chance to reconsider. And so with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second? Motion's been moved and properly seconded. There is no debate on a motion to adjourn, I don't think. Is there debate on a motion to adjourn? All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, seeing none, motions approved.